Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna open the Kaula Loa Neighborhood Board meeting, 28, and our first order is to have to discuss rules of speaking.
Or, no, we have to do the election of officers first.
The first order is elected of officers.
Hold on, hold on one moment, hold on.
Haney Meatanga is our president, president of our board.
That's what I'm doing.
My name is Dadi Pataki, and I'm starting.
Okay, come here. Testing one, two, three.
Testing one, one, two, three.
Okay.
Is that okay? That's better.
Okay, perfect.
We are starting the Kaula Loa Neighborhood Board meeting, 28. The first item to deal with tonight is our call to order Chair Protem Hade III. Manatanga is not here this evening, he's home ill. So we are gonna have election of officers. And so all officers are required to be voted on by roll call forum vote. So we would need to nominate.
Ask for any nominations.
Nominate the elected officers. And I would like to nominate Haney Meatanga as chair.
Oh, seconded.
Uh, seconded. Vice Chair, any nominations?
Oh, no, we don't.
They have to do that.
We have to do the vote every time.
Okay. Okay, all, all members of the board may vote now. All in, all that vote for Haney Meatanga for chair, raise your hand.
No, actually, it has to be roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, it has to be roll?
Yes, everyone.
Okay, let's roll call.
Okay.
Do the roll call.
Yeah, I do. So this roll call vote is for Haney Meatoga being Chair for the Neighborhood Board. Member Fanoi. Yes, okay. Member Greer. Yes. Um, member Dadi.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Member Matangi.
Yep.
Member Meatoga.
Aye.
Member Violeti.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so yes has it. Um, we are electing Haney Meatoga for another term of being Chair. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, nominations of Vice Chair. I nominate Dadi for Vice Chair. I second.
Okay. Okay, this nomination for member Dadi to be Vice Chair was motioned by member Greer and seconded by member Matangi. Member Fanoi Mwana. Yes, okay. Um, member Greer. Yes. Member Dadi. Yes, okay. Member Matangi. Yes, okay, thank you. Member Meatoga.
Yes.
Um, Chair Meatoga.
Yes.
And member Violeti. Yes, okay, thank you. So yes has it, and welcome, member Dadi for Vice Chair, thank you.
Thank you, the next election is for the Officer of Secretary. Any nominations?
I nominate Stephanie Violeti.
Stephanie Violeti is nominated. I second.
Okay, this vote is for Secretary, um, for member Stephanie Violeti. Member Fanoi Mwana. Yes, okay. Member Greer. Yes. Member Dadi. Yes. Member Matangi. Yes. Chair Meatoga.
Yes.
Yes. And member Violeti.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Welcome, member Violeti for Secretary, thank you.
Okay, final officer is Treasurer. Are there any nominations for Treasurer?
I nominate David Fanoi Mwana.
Second. Is that okay, David? Okay, just gotta make sure that you wanted to the position. Okay, so, okay. So basically, the Treasurer right now, um, we don't have a budget, so we're gonna have some duties. Some duties coming up. Okay, perfect, okay. Okay, so this nomination is, or this vote is for member Fanoi Mwana as Treasurer. Uh, member Fanoi Mwana. Yes, okay. Member Greer. Yes, okay. Member Dadi.
Yes.
Yes. Member Matangi. Yes, okay. Uh, Chair Meatoga.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Secretary Violeti.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, and now we're to the state annual reports. Thank you.
City and State Monthly Reports, Honolulu Fire Department, may go ahead.
Thank you.
Hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, Captain Ooki from the Haula Fire Station. And I'll have the monthly August stats for the Haula, Kuku, and Kaava stations combined, as well as our monthly fire safety tip. So for the month of August, it was reported we had one structure fire, one wildland brush fire, three nuisance fires, and one activated alarm. We also had 51 medical alarms, 10 motor crash vehicle collisions, two rescues, and three ocean rescues. And for our fire safety tip for the month of September, number, it includes evacuation planning. In the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all your members of your family household. Keep in mind those with limited abilities such as children, the elderly, and pets. Identify possible exit and escape routes. Pre-determine a safe meeting place. Always choose the escape route that is safest. Very good strategy, how to do and practice them often. Also assemble an emergency supply kit if possible. Remember to pack important documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Remember to stay calm, informed, and still alert. For more information, we encourage you to visit fire.honolulu.gov. There is a Wildland Fire Protection Guide that is offered, is very informative. That's for the month of August, any questions?
I'm sorry, you get the hot seat, but, um, you know, fire is at the top of everybody's thoughts right now. And, um, if we had a wildfire out here, I know we've had small ones, fairly small ones, but one that is more major, kind of similar to Maui. Are there protocols in place for that kind of thing? Can you just briefly explain how that would work?
Yes, so we have standard operating guidelines. We had this pre-Maui fire that kind of just describes all our SOGs for wildfires, so. Depending on the weather, if it's a red flag warning, we will dispatch two engines and one tanker to the incident, and they'll determine if more resources are needed. But basically, we're, we're there to contain the fire and protect any structures, that's the main thing. Determination of the IC, what you need at the incident.
Has there ever been a problem out here with accessing water from water hydrants or fires, or putting out fires?
Not to my knowledge, the only problem would be on the distance from the hydrant to the fire. But, um, I don't know if you're aware, but we have a long shuttle runs. So basically, a tanker holds like three times the amount of an engine. And his basic job is to shuttle water to all the engine trucks and keep them topped off. So, um, usually they'll call for more assets if needed, so they're saying, I think it's like they've all come out here several, several times. Just because of the distance from Kam Highway to wherever the water is, that's our only option out here. But as far as the hydrants go, we never had a problem with a non-working hydrant.
So would you say that there are a lot of holes in this general Kaula Loa area that really don't have close
Yeah, well, there's a few, um, areas that are of concern, like, um, Waukerville and Kuku is a little bit of a concern because the hydrant is on Kam Highway. There's a couple properties on, such as like, um, Haleiaha and, um, Punalu Valley Road, where the hydrants are kind of far. But a lot of them involve like one, you know, individual structure.
What would be the process for people in those neighborhoods that are, have several homes that are far away from a hydrant? Would, would they be able to ask the city council or the fire department to put in additional hydrants? How would that work?
Out in the boonies person. And, um, maybe the egg.
Uh-oh.
Is it cutting in and out?
Really hard, uh, it's freezing up, I think it's, um, possibly the internet.
Okay, I hear you now, yeah, you were freezing up earlier too, sorry. Was there another question? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Uh, would you try to answer the last one that I asked about? How would we get more hydrants? What's the process for getting more hydrants in those areas? Where there are several homes that may need fire extinguishing machines? What is the process for getting more hydrants? I tell you what, I can write down a list of things, and maybe we can get a list of things from other people here, and maybe you could give us more information next month. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I can hear you now, it's cutting in and out, I'm sorry. But I see if there were problems with Punalu.
Thing about the process, what is the process? How does the community ask for more hydrants? Do we go to the chief of the fire department, or do we do? Yes.
I believe that would be Board of Waters, Board of Waters, um, Department.
Okay. Okay.
Did you get that? I'm sorry.
Any other question? I got it. Yeah, I got it, thank you. Go ahead, any other question?
There is one. Connor's.
I see something in the comments by Casey about the, um, fire hydrant for the help per town. They actually put a hydrant back there, we put that house with the loud every day.
Okay, so.
Yes, I have to follow up on that, but I believe it probably would be Board of Water, maybe with Fire, um, HFD's input. But I'm not aware of us installing any hydrants or, or planning it, it's just maybe problem areas you go through, um, HFD and Board of Water, possibly.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for the officers? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are we asking questions? Are we asking questions?
Was it Connor's?
Yes, Casey, two minutes, please.
Okay, um, also, I put two things in the chat, and, uh, the other one is about the drownings or the, um, ocean rescues. There were two drownings, one in Laiea and one in Haula. Are those what you call ocean rescues? Um, did you respond to them? And there was a problem with the one, the man who jumped off Laiea Point, um, that the regular area people, um, tried, that's been the staging area off of Kamehameha Highway, um, there was a chain across, and people couldn't get, uh, my understanding is the rescue vehicles couldn't get through to, um, Laiea Point where often there's problems. And if, um, I didn't know if you experienced that, or if the community could step up and see if that area could be kept as the, um, traditional staging area for rescues. And the other thing is, we, all up and down this side with the increased tourism, we wanted to know, are you the ones that we asked for additional jet ski, or how does that work?
Sorry, what was the second part? I can answer the first part, but in this, the second part.
Okay, sorry, um, there, um, with all the tur, new tourists, additional tourists, um, we were told that from, um, Kulu Ranch, um, all the way up to the North Shore, you might need an additional, um, jet ski, is that kept at the fire department?
I can answer, I'll answer the two parts. So yes, our, um, stat on ocean rescues involves any drownings, um, swimmers in distress, any boats, any kayaks, so we did respond to those two drownings you referred to. One was in Haula Beach Park. And, um, it was a freediver, and there was two off of Laiea Point, um, one of them required CPR. As far as access goes, we used to access that area, it is private property, I believe. But when HFD had a jet ski, access that just out of a mutual, um, understanding. But HFD doesn't have any jet skis anymore. We gave up that program several years ago. So right now, Ocean Safety takes care of all the jet skis. Not sure as far as the access, it's a particular private property, but we'd have to follow up on that. But it would be Ocean Safety, uh, launching their ski from there or bringing the patient on shore. If not, we have to go up, uh, go up Laiea Point and, um, access one of those access areas up there. And as far as the, um, jet ski goes, I don't know if you're aware, but our old fire station currently houses Rescue Nine. It's a, it's a jet ski and two, um, city and county lifeguards, and they're, they're from eight to five in the evening on weekdays, and they pretty much roam, roam all the way from Sunset to Kulu. So it's kind of like their area. So they're actually super quick nowadays compared to before, them being in this general area, always on their, um, with their truck and their ski, so. That's pretty much the ski that would cover this area. Rescue Nine out of, of the old, um, Haula station next to, next to Woo's, Sundry's.
Mahalo.
Good answer. Okay.
No, no, uh, thank you, so that the community will have to ask HRI if that traditional piece of land could be, um, kept.
Yeah, so as far as the, the skis, they can lock, if they determine that their spot, we don't really choose the spot where they launch their ski, but that is, you know, that is a spot we used to bring people in before from Laiea Point because access is hard from the other areas, so. With it being locked, I believe that's either private, private person's area, or HRI could be involved in that area, I'm not positive.
Any other questions from the community? Let's not, we'll go ahead, thank you very much, from Honolulu Fire Department.
All right, thank you.
United States Army.
Starting first, correct, Representative 25th, September Brigade and US uh, person is that September's hiring fair is happening on the 19th. Alamo Military Reservation. Uh, starting at 3:00 AM and ending at 2:00 PM. It'll open to public, uh, they'll be doing provisional hiring that day, so you can make sure to bring your two job preferences to the Social Security Department. By the time each of them die along the path. Next announcement is the, is the training brief on JP MRC. That's Pacific multinational readiness set. So the 25th Infantry Division is going to along with the JP MRC folks, as well as the 196th Infantry Brigade from October through November of this year, that's when JP MRC is gonna happen. And we're doing that to prepare and validate the divisions to deploy fight and win in combat operations across the entire Indo-Pacific AOR. The initial forecast is for about 600 more participants from Thailand, New Zealand, Indonesia, Philippines, and UK, which is an increase from last year. Uh, please be aware that there may be a small increase in traffic in North. There are gonna be more details as we get closer to that exercise. Last is that the, uh, Garrison has published its September Training Advisory to Oahu on the 31st of August. Uh, so in the month of September, the Army and Navy will continue training in the East Training Area with their chair daytime only. Uh, that today, they'll do it on the 19th and the 21st. Blank fire training is gonna happen day only, the 11th through the 29th of September. There's gonna be demolitions training, daytime only on the 22nd. And additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there'll be artillery and mortar training. Um, on the 1st through the 10th, it's gonna happen on the 25th through the 29th of September. Uh, also, a company of battalion-sized gunfire exercise with small arms, heavy infantry fire, direct fires is gonna happen this month as well. Uh, if you have any additional questions or would like to be on the email chain, you can email usag.hawaii.comrel, C-O-M-R-E-L, at army dot. In late October through the first two weeks of November, JP MRC is gonna have their, that's when that same JP MRC exercise is gonna happen, just, it's a big thing for us, and we like to make sure we hit it a couple times. Um, you know, that is discussed a couple times. Um, that will mean there's a small increase in aircraft, both airplanes and helicopters around the Oahu communities, and we're gonna have more information on that as we get closer. Those are the announcements I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the board? Any questions of the community? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, testing, one, two, three, sorry, we have to double check one more time. Um, just to let you guys know, um, Officer, okay, perfect. Officer Atkins said that his speakers are not working, um, Officer Atkins, did, yeah, Atkins, did you want to try one more time? Okay, I just want to double check, um, I did get the report in the chat, just to let everyone know. And, um, yeah, I will have in minutes, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is filling of vacancies of board members.
There are volunteers.
Um, yes, um, are there any volunteers? Well, let's start with, um, District One, or Kahuku. Are there any, is there anyone that'd like to volunteer to be on the board from Kahuku? Are anyone that you would like to, um, nominate? To have from Kahuku.
I, I would love to, but I don't have any.
Okay, 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 are there any nominees? Are those that would like to volunteer from Laiea?
I would love to, but I'm not looking.
Okay, okay, for Sub District Three, Haula, are there any volunteers? Okay, we've got two volunteers, wow! Okay, um, the first volunteer is Tuzi Avangaleo. Avangaleo, and Tuzi, um, has been a board member in the past. And the second volunteer is Michael F., President Haula Auto. Um, how do we see?
So, since I already know Dr. Tuzi is a member, so I can, by his information, his information's already done. May I clarify your, and your name is, I'm sorry. Michael F. Okay, that would be Sub District Three. Okay, you're good, bye. Yeah, you're in, okay, so tell us a little bit about yourself, since we already know about Dr. Tuzi. Um, and, um, why you want to be part of the board?
Um, hi, I, I worked in, uh, sort of community development and probably in the healthcare arena for about 30 years, have lived in healthcare for 20. Um, have, uh, served on the board of the Kaula Loa Health Center. In fact, um, about 25 years ago, I was one of the folks that helped start that health center. I was with the Primary Care Association at the time. Um, I continue to work in, in healthcare and community development, mostly in Kaliti. Uh, but I've been more, more interested in sort of migrating my energies over here to my own community, which I think sort of fits with my value set. I'm serving on the Haula Community Association Board. I've served with, uh, Stephanie on the Kaula Loa Health and Wellness Center, Community Foundation, um, and, uh, and would be delighted to be a part of this entity here. I don't know, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
I wanted to say thank you to, uh, Michael F. and Dr. Tuzi for agreeing to, uh, participate as members of our community on the Kaula Loa Neighborhood Board. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. We have motioned, maybe the first and a second, and then two votes, sorry.
I move that we accept, uh, and Michael F. and Tuzi, Dr. Tuzi Avangaleo on the board as members of District Three, Haula. And District Two.
District Three.
Three, it is three, okay, okay.
And then who would be second? Oh, second, okay. So if there's no objections, we're you need to, you need, yeah, otherwise we can't, otherwise we can't hear you, sorry. It will be recorded.
Now, it wasn't an objection, but I just needed to know how many members in each district are you allowed? I had always thought it was one member on the board per district. So if you could clarify.
Sure, currently, there is, um, let's see, let me look at that panelists really quick. Currently, there is openings. There, Sub District Three, there's two vacancies, Sub District Two, there's two vacancies, Sub District One, there's one vacancy, and according to the attendance, which, let me just double check. Okay, so there is one for Sub District Five. Um, no, that are closed already, um, we have, we have already won in Sub District One, and, uh, which is member Violeti. And uh, which is Member Violeti, and then we already have the other ones um, covered, so. Member Matangi is Sub District Four, and then Member Funamuan is Sub District Two. So those are the ones that are available, the ones that are available are Sub District One and Two right now, so we just covered Sub District Three. Okay, does that answer your question? Okay, perfect, thank you.
And just to clarify, I think part of your question was, is there an even number of people from every district? And no, there's not, it depends upon the number of people that reside in the district, let's face it on that.
Okay, I have a question from Lily in the chat that says, if we want to volunteer for the neighborhood board, do we have to commit at tonight's meeting? No, um, I would have to verify your address to see if you're in the sub district. And then um, once the verification is done, then you would present yourself on why you want to be on the board and then the vote, um, the board will vote you on. If that answers your question. Thank you.
What sub district are you from, Lily? Do we know?
Um, one.
One. And there's a vacancy, that's Kahuku.
Happy to talk with her too.
Yeah, and Stephanie would be happy to talk with you if you have questions about being on the board, so you can connect with her later.
So here are no objections for the two um, two candidates for Sub District Three, which is Michael F. and Dr. Tucy. Um, any objections? Okay, you're on the board and I will um, give you the auto. Six, um, we're not taking my baby out when men break, so I can give you the office, is that right? Okay. I'm going to do that when, at the break, right now, okay, so that we can, they can vote. Okay, raise your hand for both Michael and Dr. Tucy. I solemnly swear. That I will faithfully support. The Constitution. You should have laws. Of the United States of America. The Constitution and laws. Of the State of Hawaii. The Charter and Laws. Of the City and County of Honolulu. And the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan. And I will conscientiously. And impart partially discharge. My duties to the best of my ability. As a member of the Neighborhood Board. Of which I have been elected. Okay, now you have voting rights, thank you.
All right, we're going on to. There's the one here from the other districts, right, no other nominees, okay. We're going to the item number five on our agenda, which is the initial. Convening procedures, these have to be determined at the beginning of every year for each board. This is why Connie said, I think, no, okay, um. So A is determination of meeting daytime, location, format. Would everybody be in agreement to keeping our? Daytime. Location and format. Yes, 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 okay. Okay, okay, uh, the next item is a board recess schedule, we have to determine. Um, if we will recess, typically we recess in December and July, would that be okay with everyone here? Say, yes, 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 yeah. The third item is rules of speaking and time limits. Uh, the general rule is two minutes or less for all questions, comments, and concerns. And then our presentations, those are eight minutes, does everyone agree? To keep that the same, it's eight minutes or less, so for presentation, so um. But that's, everyone be in agreement, starting with you, okay, yes, 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 okay, all in agreement. Yes, thank you Connie, okay, and. Item on that agenda is rules of uh. Formation of committees, I would like to recommend that we defer this to another time, each person on the board, consider if you would like to. Uh, chair a committee and what that committee would be, and we'll talk about that at a future meeting very soon. All right, okay, and then formation of to consider the conversation of district. Uh, but I would recommend that we defer. Item E to consider the conversion of sub district seats at two seats at large and have a discussion in the next meeting. Seconded, and everyone else agree, yes? Yes, yes, okay, Stephanie, you agree, okay, all right, so we'll go on to. Question. Okay, that was important, okay, yes, your voice is different. All right, so we're at board business. We are now at board business, um. Adoption of resolutions, um. To support the release of two point seven million dollars city funds for the mayor. By the mayor for the Koholaloa Brazilians Hub, and that was my resolution, and um, I'll just. Sort of paraphrase it, it's uh, the draft, the resolution is to support the release of two point seven five million of city funds by the mayor for the Koholaloa Brazilians Hub. Uh, this, these are funds that were set aside in a previous funding year, have not been released at this time. Uh, whereas Koholaloa District has no barricade shelters available to provide for the safety of residents who must evacuate their homes. Whereas Koholaloa has many vulnerable frontline communities at high risk from flash floods, hurricanes, and tsunamis. Whereas Koholaloa District, eighty five percent of the homes are wood frame homes built before nineteen ninety five. Are projected to be destroyed in a category one. Whereas many of the homes and most of the public infrastructure. Located in the flood and tsunami zone. And whereas Kamehameha Highway, the only road in and out of Koholaloa District is at extreme risk of major erosion. Debris blockage in hurricanes and tsunamis. Whereas the city and state emergency agencies warned. That in a category one hurricane, Koholaloa residents may be on their own for up to thirty days or more. And whereas Hiko also projects that the Koholaloa communities may be without power thirty days or more in an extreme wind event. We therefore. Be it resolved that the Koholaloa Neighborhood Board strongly urged the city and county of Honolulu to release the two point seven five million. Allocated in the city budget for the Honolulu, for the hot, for the Koholaloa Brazilians Hub, ordinance twenty two dash one four, bill fifteen. That was in nine, in twenty twenty two, CD two FD one, project number two zero two one one three four. For the plan, design, construction, and inspection, the development of the Brazilians Hub as described in the Oahu Brazilians Strategy. In the Ola Brazilians Strategy with forty four actions passed by the city in two thousand nineteen, the Ha'ula Brazilians Hub. Falls under action fifteen, was named as a model Brazilians Hub for Oahu. The first of a network of Brazilians hubs that will be created around the island of Oahu. Be it further resolved that the copies of this resolution be transmitted to the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu. All members of the Honolulu City Council, the Director of the City and County of Honolulu. Planning and permitting, the Director of the City and County of Honolulu, Honolulu Department of Transportation Services. The City Planning Commission, the State Office of Planning, the State Land Use Commission. And Central Oahu Area Legislators, and all members of the Leeward and Central Oahu Neighborhood Boards, and all Neighborhood Board Chairs. Now for the board to vote, um.
We have a first, we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Remember, Meatongu makes a motion until approved.
Okay, all right, perfect, I'm going to put, can I put you in second or first, all right, okay, perfect, awesome. Okay, so there was a motion for Chair Meatoga and seconded by Member Greer to adopt. Um, the resolution by Member Dadi or Vice Chair Dadi, uh, resolution to support the release of two point seven, seven five million dollars of city funds. By the mayor for the Koholaloa, oh, sorry, Koholaloa, I apologize, uh, Brazilian, um, let's see, uh, Member Funamuan. Yes, okay, Member Greer. Okay, Member Dadi. Or Vice Chair Dadi. Uh, Member Matangi. Chair Meatoga.
Hi.
Secretary Violeti, okay, and Member Tulsi, Dr. Tulsi, okay. And Member F., yes, okay, so. So eight votes, the motion, I mean, the resolution passes, thank you.
Why I'm not here, I can go ahead and discuss this, I was going to wait, but I'm not, I'm going to get it over here.
Okay, okay, yes.
Hi, this is Member Matangi. He from representing the Honolulu um, Community Association tonight for the Honolulu Communities Sub District Four. And we would like to submit more consideration, um. It is to support or not support Hannah Bay Estate's request for environmental assessment in support of the SMA major permit. And it's a very uh, specific, but after all of the eligible votes, everything were counted, we will submit in support. And but we want to go on record to make sure that that is based on the assurance that the ag land is completely out of this project. So the project that we are in support of has to do with the residences involved in the Hannah Bay project as presented to us in our last two meetings. And so I would like to submit that at this time. So. Is this a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, a resolution, um, we'll take a vote.
Yeah, we need a. A motion.
A motion, okay, did you want to make a motion? Really did, just now, okay, okay, the motion has been made by Lorraine and um, want to start with Dr. Tucy? And, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we can have a discussion, yeah.
We need a second, so, we need a second.
Okay. Any discussion, any discussion?
Okay, I, I, I. I totally support. The Association. I internal process because I'm new, I saw the resolution, shouldn't the resolution come after the presentation before the Neighborhood Board? Or have they presented? They did. We need to, um, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I just thought it was in my mouth.
They did present to both the combined Honolulu and Community Associations and before the Neighborhood Board. And um, they are not required to come back, and so this is based. Combined meeting, and we will still be monitoring, of course, especially the use of the ag land. Because we were assured by the principals that the ag land would remain ag land and would were not in any time, so thank you.
Okay.
Solid. Who's responsible for monitoring the ag land?
Okay. Anybody. The question is. Okay, sorry. Okay, the question was, who's going to monitor? Who's authorized? Okay, who's authorized to um, monitor the ag land, is that correct?
Yeah, so we don't just say, we're going to monitor it, we have no authority.
Okay.
We just do authority, right? Monitor the ag.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can. Go on, I want to answer the question, you have some concerns. We might.
Okay, the speaker might get feedback, sorry. And then clarify. That's concern. Oh, there's going to be feedback from the speaker, okay, you have to put it on this side, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys, I can't jump that far and shore. So if anybody wants to speak, they have to speak in the mic, otherwise we can't pick up the recording, so. We got it, so I'm just letting everybody know that.
I apologize, um, when we talk about the ag land, because we know the purposes, we're not talking about monitoring it officially, we're talking about if anybody. In the neighborhood were to see anything, the concerns are lamping and things. But the proposal that we're submitting tonight is a totally different subject, so what we're voting on is to approve the um. Presentation that was presented to us, and that is for the residents there to be allowed to get the environmental um, assessment for the SMP. So this has to do with that, and the ag land, we will continue at other times, and this discussion will probably be ongoing for a while. Is that, is that enough, you're good? Thank you so much, you guys. Just, just to clarify, was this for a major SMP or is this a minor?
It was a major. They answered all your concerns about Koholaloa.
Came and and um, the houses are already there, and so there's only one. So.
Okay, so the vote for this resolution is to, which is um, voted by Member Matangi and seconded by Member Greer. Is to um, adopt the, the adoption of the resolution regarding Hannah Bay Estates for the SM, SMA major, okay. Um, Member Funamuan. Okay. Member Greer. Abstain, okay, no problem. Member or Vice Chair Dadi. Yes, okay. Member Matangi. Yes, okay. Chair Connie. Sorry, you need to.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Secretary Violeti, yes, okay. Um, Member Tulsi. Dr. Tulsi. And Member F. Yes, okay, so we have seven yeses, zero nos, and one abstain, so the resolution passes, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with the approval of the regular minutes. And that is item seven, approval of meeting minutes. We've had a lot of minutes that we have not been able to approve, so these are meeting minutes, November eleventh, twenty twenty one. So is this, can we do them all? So is this, can we do them all at one time? Okay.
Unless there's any questions.
Okay. Just, we weren't there.
Oh.
Even though we weren't there, does this prove? Would this, is this just merely a technical, just approval of it for vanity?
Right, okay, yeah. So let me explain. So all of these past minutes are memorandums. Basically, if you go into, it's your website and, and look at them. If you see any corrections that needs to be made, we can still correct them. Um, but as of right now, we do have one for November 11th, 2021, January 13th, 2022, April 13th, June 8th, and August 11th of 2023. Does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding those minutes? I need. Um, this is. Yeah, actually, this is board business. So it's not, yeah, it's not a um, it's not community. Yeah. Okay, so um, anybody has any objections or? Okay.
I'd like to approve that we, we uh, approve, move that we approve all these minutes. Second.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
All in favor, yes.
Yep. Okay. All right. This, this is done. Yes. Okay, now we're going to move on to the government report, starting with Mayor Rick Bongiardi's representative, Kat Taishen. Kat, are you here?
I am here. Good evening, everybody. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with this month's highlights from the mayor's newsletter. Uh, there's a message from mayor on the devastating wildfires that destroyed the Haina and information on what you can do to help. Um, update two, there's a new lifeguard tower at Kahue Point Beach Park and uh, which is known as Electric Beach. It's the, it was installed in August 2023. It's the first in 11 years, which expands the total to 42 towers across the island. The tower was immediately staffed and they did their first rescue two hours later. Um, update three, read about the Honolulu Liquor Commission's new administrator, Sal Petelos, a longtime industry leader with years of hands-on experience. Update four, how mayor and his administration is following through on a decades-old promise to redevelop the historic Verona Village in Ewa. The city will be turning over the land to developers Peter Savio and Habitat for Humanity for redevelopment of the historic village. Update five, Forbes Magazine once again names the city as one of the best places to work in Hawaii. And update six, Mary Lewis, the administrator of the Blaisdell Arena and Waikiki Shell announces her retirement after more than 30 years of public service. Uh, the city bids Mary a heartfelt congratulations and a warm ahui hole. The September 2023 edition of the mayor's highlights newsletter can be found online and I will drop the link into the chat. Okay, uh, for departmental issues, the first question was, how many months of the rental and utility relief program? Uh, how much are, how many months are they, are the monies available for? What are the conditions? Is it tied to how much income you make? What are the terms and conditions? Where do you sign paperwork? So for those who aren't familiar, the rental and utility relief program temporarily reopened for the first, for first-time applicants earlier this year, thanks to $25 million from Mayor Bongiardi and the Honolulu City Council. The program has received more than 3,000 applications from the online application portal in June and in-person events in June, July, and September. The next scheduled in-person application event is on September 20th at the Susanna Wesley Community Center. Um, big thank you to board member Dottie. Uh, the program held an application event at the Honolulu Community Center in June. Eighty-nine renters who had never received funding through the program were able to apply. To be eligible, a renter must earn at or below 80% of the Honolulu's area median income, which is less than 105K per year for a family of four. Qualified renters can get up to six months of rent and utility assistance for unpaid bills. Payments are made directly to the landlords or to the utility. Athletic charities Hawaii and the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancements intake staff are working directly with applicants. And funds are limited and no application is guaranteed funding. The second question was about the Good Jobs Hawaii Program. Can we get more information? What type, what types of jobs will be available? Will they be available in Ko'olau Loa? How will it be promoted? So Good Jobs Oahu is a program that provides job training at no cost to our neighbors who suffered financial hardship during and after the pandemic. We can gain skills in healthcare, education, clean energy, skilled trades, and the creative industries. You can also take classes to start a career at the city. Classes are available in person at the UH Community Colleges as well as online. And the program can provide laptops and internet hotspots for people who can't get online at home. Uh, UH is leading the outreach with support from the City Office of Economic Revitalization. And for more information, I will drop a link in the chat. Uh, item three, when will the field lights be replaced or fixed at the Haula Community Park? DPR reports. The field light poles have been taken down for safety reasons and the replacement will be a capital improvement budget item due to the cost and scope of the work. The administration manages its capital improvement budget based not only on funding, but by priority, backlog list of improvements, and the staff levels needed to work on and complete projects. When projects are added to the budget, such as this one, they are considered in context of all other projects across the island and placed accordingly on the lengthy list of improvements we'd like to complete. Adding field light poles at Haula Community Park has been noted and will be purpose for future capital improvement. Question four, Haula Beach Park, can the signs be re-erected? The signs have been down for almost six months. Can there be a contest for don't touch the seal signs? Uh, DPR reports, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, places signs at Haula Beach Park to warn the public about monk seals on a regular basis when they're present at the park. The public can call NOAA and I'll drop the uh, phone number into the chat or 911 to report any harassment of seals. Okay, next one, vacation vans. So last month I reported, the customer service department said that they don't regulate vacation van rentals. Um, I have one update from HPD and one from DPP. I'll start with HPD. HPD reports that it is legal to rent a van, but unlawful to use it for human habitation when parked on any roadway, street, or highway, or public property between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, or when it is parked on private property without the owner's authorization. However, this does not apply in parks, camps, and other recreational areas in compliance with the law and rules and regulations or under emergency conditions considering vehicular safety. DPP has a slightly lengthier but very similar response. Um, their analysis is based on the fact that staying in a vacation van, vacation van or recreation vehicle on a lot is considered camping. Camping is allowed as part of outdoor recreation. Outdoor recreation requires a conditional use permit. Um, and is only available in the P2, ACT2 country, business, and business mixed-use districts. Um, outdoor recreation, uh, which includes camping and which includes staying in a vacation van or rental, uh, recreation vehicle, is not an allowable use in the residential apartment or industrial zones. Um, they cannot rent an RV out unless they have a lawful place for the, for the use to be conducted. So if a conditional use permit is obtained and RV camping is approved through the CUP, they may operate such a business. I have two more. Uh, the next one is, if kids are fined for touching seals, is there a parental notification process? HPD reports that the Hawaiian monk seals are protected under the Endangered Species Act, Marine Mammal Protection Act, and state of Hawaii law. It is a federal offense to touch, feed, or harass a monk seal in any way. The state's Dealinar Division of Conservation and Resource Officer Enforcement, Do Care, has the discretion of either issuing a citation or arresting regarding violations, including juveniles. In any case, an officer shall ensure and document that every effort is made to notify the youth's parents or guardian before a youth is apprehended unless mitigating circumstances make it impracticable to do so. The process in which this is done is dictated on a case-by-case basis, depending on whether the parent or guardian is present and whether the officer has contact information for the parent or guardian. Finally, the last question was for DPP. Please provide any updates on illegal vacation rentals in Ko'olau Loa. How many vacation rentals have been shut down this summer? How many have been fined? Since ordinance 22-7, DPP has received 1,271 requests for investigations. Of those, 841 notices of violations were issued and 198 were referred to the Code Compliance Scratch for fines. The total fines collected since October 2022 to now is $581,405. DPP does not maintain details on the short-term rental enforcement by areas or districts. So this, that, that's just the aggregate numbers. If you do have a specific street address or website screenshots of the ads, you know, for these things, please submit a request for investigation to DPP and they will investigate and report back to you. And I'll drop a, uh, I'll drop a link in the chat to the DPP website that you can submit violations for. For ads where you see them online, just submit a screenshot with the URL and then for a youth violation, submit the address and reporting pictures. Happy to take other questions.
And Kat, I just wanted to be sure of something um, about the camping vans. They can be parked on private property for the night, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM uh, without, and that is legal. Is that correct?
If the private property has a, has a conditional use permit, which specifically permits it. So I'll, I'll drop the DPP's full analysis into the, um, into the chat so that you guys can kind of refer back to it.
Because we, we have a closely akin issue with this property at Kukinu'au. Uh, they actually have been observed to have camping vans parked on their ag land area. And that's what the community does object to. Uh, because they said they're gonna have the ag land, the use of ag, not, or glamping or camping. And so these vans are being parked over there. So this, this is an issue for the Pununu'u community. So heads up. Lorraine.
Yeah. No, I'm, oh, you want me?
You need to stop in the mic.
Hi, um, I'm back. Well, it is a problem and a concern that we have. Um, there are two vans and we have not seen or we have not been able to substantiate those vans being used at, um, on the ag land. They've just been parked there. And so it is a concern because online, we have seen advertisements for them to, to have the camping or overnight glamping. And so that is a concern and that's why we want to know what camping is allowed and, and what those parameters are for camping on ag land.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put the analysis in for, you know, the conditional use permit and where it is allowed and, 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 yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll drop that for you guys.
That would be perfect. Thank you so much.
Um, there's questions.
Catherine Heath, you have a question?
Um, I have a, a, can there be training of our local HPD officers on all of these matters so that they feel safe and comfortable and confident in stepping out of their vehicles and giving tickets, say, to the individuals who camp 24/7 at Haula Beach Park and are quite visible from the 7-Eleven where they're frequently parked? Um, that would be nice. It would also be nice if they could have some instruction on uh, how to intervene with the campers in the bathrooms. All right? Um, you know, it's nice to, to cite all of this information at us, but without enforcement, it doesn't mean a thing. And we are tired of the fast talk, or at least I am very tired of the fast talk from the mayor and it's all it is, talk. Okay, they have erected one sign. They have left the two signs that have were knocked down. One is jammed into a tree by the man who voluntarily cleans the park. And the other one is in no man's land between the wall and the uh, ironwood trees. So please, it's tall. And we housed many, many people for the seal and for the Instagram tree, which will probably fall into the ground and uh, cause a major accident in the near future. But please, and we have uh, proactive solutions, not resolutions and things of that nature. That would be appreciated. Thank you for sharing this with the mayor in the strength I gave it.
I'm sorry, so to clarify, the signs were at which beach park?
Haula Beach Park. There is one between the wall and the ironwood trees by the bus stop, which is technically no man's land. We know this because when people camp there, nobody will remove them. And the other one is wedged into um, some um, I'm, I'm forgetting the name of the bush, over by the trash can. They did concrete one in, but they didn't bother to even take away the two that were knocked down. Okay, that would not happen elsewhere on this island. All right, and I can start naming neighborhoods where it would not happen. So we would like to be treated equitably. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Derek Preston.
Derek Preston. Derek?
Yeah, my thing is, uh, recently I had an experience with DPP on illegal vacation rentals. I have seven in walking distance to my house. And so I dealt with Ty. Uh, it took about three weeks to come out to talk to the uh, illegal renters. Uh, then the owner was contacted, given a warning. Once again, then the owner was contacted about an illegal ad. Finally, uh, two months go by, uh, the, the owner took two weeks uh, break from the renting for the last two years. And now when uh, contacted again renting the uh, the multiple dwellings out over here in Haula by Pokewa, they claim now that they are a 30-day rental. Um, and so what I found out was there is no way to really follow up uh, to ensure that they are not doing short-term renting. Uh, Ty said he will ask for contracts, but the folks could still leave and get a um, refund or plus the follow-up to make contact to come out. Uh, if there's a car there to make contact. So there really are holes in the uh, vacation rental system. And the reason I bring this up, it's very important because we've lost a lot of local families besides outside investment to have these uh, number of units, just by approximate area, renting uh, vacation rentals. The noise coming in at 11:00 PM. So I'm just, they need to tighten the um, uh, vacation rental, the 30 days. There needs to be a way to track it to make sure that it's not using it as a short-term rental. Because these folks have been warned over here three times. No financial uh, fine whatsoever. Thank you, Catherine.
Got it. I'll pass it on to DPP. We need to tighten enforcement of the short-term rentals.
Yeah, he says they don't really, they, they do enforcement, but they don't have any way to do any investigation. So that's the deal.
Got it. I'll pass it on.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Other questions? Thank you. We'll go ahead now to Councilman Matt Wire or his staffer, Latani. Are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Hi, Aloha Latani. Aloha Latani Park here on behalf of Councilmember Matt Wire. Um, just a quick reminder about real property taxes for anyone who is interested in filing for a homeowner's exemption or tax credit uh, for this fiscal year. The deadline to do so is October 2nd. And I'll put this and a bunch of other links in the chat, uh, chat one time, Paul. Um. Speaking of taxes, earlier this year, council passed Bill 14, which provides a real property tax credit of $350 for property owners who have been granted an exemption. Looking ahead for next year, uh, tax year, which begins on July 1st, 2024, council raised the homeowner exemption from $60,000 to $80,000. And for Kupuna, that amount was raised from $100,000 to $120,000. Uh, Councilmember Wire has introduced Bill 34, uh, which would increase the standard homeowner exemption to $250,000 and for Kupuna, uh, $300,000. Uh, in other legislative news, Councilmember Wire previously introduced Bill 47 relating to recycling. And that just passed out of committee this week. Um, this bill would require the city to include as part of its curbside recycling program, the collection of manufactured compostable materials. So stuff that are uh, made to break down in a compost system at the end of its useful life. This could be like bags, food packaging, cups, plates, and so forth. The Department of Environmental Services has expressed their support in this effort. Uh, and they've noted that it goes hand in hand with their upcoming mandate to collect food waste. And we look forward to working with them to refine the bill as necessary. Um, earlier this month, council voted to approve Resolution 23185 in support of the Ko'olau Loa Community Resilience. So mahalo nui'a and to Dottie for continuing to advocate for the health, safety, and resilience of Ko'olau Loa. Um, and finally, uh, I know last week there was a question about Bill 19 and where that's at. So as you know, Bill 19 creates a framework to regulate commercial activity in city beaches. So as you know, Bill 19 creates a framework to regulate commercial activity in city beach parks. The current iteration of this bill removes previously granted exemptions for certain parks, including Kokolo Leo. Bill 19 has been on hiatus for some time now. It is currently sitting in Councilmember Atobas committee, and it's unclear when it will be heard next. I believe that the Parks Department is working on refining the bill because there was a lot of questions that came up when it was being heard. On the PBS Insights episode earlier this year, which Councilmember Wire and Director Thielen participated in, the director did seem to indicate a willingness to leave in those existing exemptions. And I'll put all that information in chat right now, but I'm happy to take questions or comments back to the council member.
A big thank you to Matt for introducing the reso to support Ko'ula Community Resilience Hub. I noted that I believe every councilman voted for that resolution. And I spoke with many who are also interested in having resilience hubs in their areas. So there's a lot of support and great interest in that. So thank you all for leading the charge through the city. Thank you. Any other questions? It's Latani. Or was it Connors? Kat, Connors? Kathleen? What's, Katie, KC, are you there?
Sorry. Thank you, Latani. As you just heard, there are so many problems with these vacation rental vans. Is it possible that you and Mac look into this? I mean, this is just another way that people are doing illegal vacation rentals. And we're getting more and more and more cheap tourists. And this is not what the community needs, and it's not what Hawaii needs. So is there any way that, you're both lawyers, you can help us out in this? And they're not paying tax, they're not paying the transient accommodation tax. And obviously, we do not think they have the proper permits for business use for these vans. We know that a lot of them are coming out of La'ia, looks to me like former students or students. And we have, everybody is getting involved. Thank you so much for looking into it and giving us some ideas how we can get some relief from this bathroom situation and everything.
Yeah, I'll bring that up to Councilmember. I believe that if they're illegally operating businesses, that may be something the state needs to take on as well. I know that in Kaneohe, there was the exact same situation and Councilmember Kiaaina was working with Senator Keo Kalole to address that issue in a certain area.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we'll go on to, thank you, Latani. And we're going to US House of Representatives Congresswoman Jill Tukuta's staffer. There's someone online from Jill Tukuta's office?
No.
Nope. Okay, going ahead to Governor's Rep, Crystal.
She actually went on a plane, so she's going to be handing in her report to me, and I'll put it on my Google Drive. Thank you.
Senator Brendan Awang's office. Anyone online from Senator Awang's office?
Yes, aloha chair. Hi. Board members, Samantha Decourt here for Senator Awang. It looks like you folks have a full agenda, so I'll keep it brief. First thing, Senator Awang would like to invite you all to the Ka'ava Ha'ula Town Hall that he, along with Rep Quinlin and Councilmember Wire, will be having on Friday, September 29th, at 5:30 at Swansea Beach Park. DOT and DLNR will be there. DOT will be discussing their proposal with the coastal erosion on Kam Highway. So we encourage you all to come out. We will be providing food and refreshments. So come after work, bring your kekis. We are asking people to register. So also online with us is Hiaka Jardine, who also works with us in Senator Awang's office. She's going to be dropping the registration link in the chat as well as the invite. Board Member Kelly Paddock, you had requested a task force. We are working with Ed Sniffen on that, but in the meantime, we got another agency, DLNR, to jump in on this conversation. So one at a time, we're working towards the task force. We did receive a number of crosswalk requests, Fronting Kahuku Elementary on Pu'ala'la Street. The following requests are all on Kam Highway. One between 7-Eleven and Ha'ula Beach Park in Ka'ava, near Po'akene'ne'ne Road, and in Ha'ula, near Ku'kana Road. Senator Awang did attend the Punalu Community Association meeting this past Tuesday, a few days ago. And we received raised crosswalk requests on Kam Highway, one Fronting Ching Store and the other Fronting Kaya Store. Just so you know, these requests have already been submitted, and we are working with DOT on its progress. Lastly, at last month's board meeting, a concern about illegal dumping at the end of the road of Kahuku Elementary School came up. We did a state visit there a few weeks ago, and there was nothing there at the time. However, please keep our office posted if it becomes an issue again. If you are able to provide pictures and possibly an address, not just with the Kahuku, with the illegal dumping at Kahuku Elementary, but anywhere, if you are able to provide pictures or possibly an address to our office, that would be helpful for us. That's all the report that I have for tonight's meeting. I'm open for questions or comments.
Any board members or community members? Catherine Heath?
I am aware that there have been deaths at the Ka'ava location. I'm not so sure about the others, but there have been deaths at where we requested one in Ha'ula. And I will ask that it is again put into consideration as having a raised crosswalk there. It's a hot area for having accidents and people crossing. It would be beneficial. I just don't understand why it's still just under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, Senator Awang has made a personal call to DOT to prioritize that along with the crosswalk Fronting Kahuku Elementary School. That also is one of the top ones that we're looking at as well. So thank you.
Casey?
And thank you. As you heard, there was a lot of concern about illegal vacation rentals and the illegal vans. The vans are not paying the transient accommodation tax or taxes. And if he could look into both of those, that would be very, very helpful. And secondly, again, I know he's very much into the, he's usually on the education committee. And we'd love the education to work with Winward Community College and these careers. If he could also look into that, of course, he understands the TV, the film, the digital content, and how great our musicians are on this side. We are not getting that training for like how our musicians can get their streaming content and how they can get, our musicians can get their music into videos or film or TV. And I mean, it's not, of course, Ian Tongi is special, but we have so many talented musicians, both young people and musicians on this side. If he could look into that, putting that pipeline in, we want everybody employed and making enough money to stay in this area and keeping the culture strong. Thank you.
Thank you. We agree. Actually, we did speak with, or I spoke with Derek today. So thank you, Derek, for contacting our office. I did update Senator Awang with the great work that you've been doing. Senator Awang did issue legislation this past session with regards to illegal rentals and will continue to push that forward this next legislative session. So we'll see what we can do to also collaborate possibly with our council members. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And your answers. Aloha, aloha. Our next order of the Jida is number nine, which are presentations. This will be on the existing family. It's on location 55133 Kamamea Highway, La'ia. Construction dates are fall of 2023 and fall of 2024. The presenter is Rachel Okochi and Gabrielle's.
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle, mine's cut off. Summer?
Summer.
Summer. Are they here? Are they on there online? Are you ready to present?
Yes, we're ready.
And there's a limit of eight minutes at maximum. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha, everybody. We're going to be presenting special management area major use permits. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
We can see it. Yes.
Okay. So this location is 55133 Kamamea Highway in La'ia. The parcel is 0.56 acres. The existing land use is partly residential and partly undeveloped. It's state land use is classified as urban. It's located in a residential zone. And it is in flood zone AE. So the project description is a five-bedroom, five-bathroom home. It will have an on-site septic system, which will not tie into the city wastewater. The house is being constructed beyond the 60-foot shoreline setback. Total impervious area is 43.6%, which is well below the 75% per land use ordinance. And the drainage of storm water would be onto the landscape areas surrounding the home. And so the home encompasses 3,284 square feet plus 7,374 square feet of hardscape. And the total land area is 24,434 square feet. This is the site boundary. This is the TMK boundary. That is the project parcel map. And here is the project map in reference to the 60-foot shoreline setback. These are some drawings of the front elevation, right side elevation, and a section through the property. These are rear and left side elevations. And these are exterior elevations. And this is an overview, 3D model of the home. And another rendering of the home. This is the back rendering. That concludes my presentation for 55133 Kamamea Highway, and I'm open to questions.
Okay, questions from the board?
Will any of the portion of the property be inundated by 3.2 feet of sea level rise? I know you said it's beyond the 60-foot shoreline setback, so I'm thinking, no, but I just want to clarify.
I don't believe so, but I'm going to look into that and we can get back to you.
And then are there any known historic cultural resources, historic features over 50 years old on this lot or in the immediate vicinity in the proposed project? Are you aware?
I'm not aware of any, but I will check into that as well. Cultural resources.
Do major SMPs like the, you should look for historic and cultural resources. And then if there are, there should be plans to preserve these historic and cultural platforms. Thank you for the presentation.
Hi, I'm Rachel Okochi with Gabrielle. There was an AIS done on an adjacent parcel. They did find some artifacts, and it was like charcoal. And this was way back, I think in the 80s or something that they found this. So as part of this project, we are, we have done an AIS. And currently, it was on the areas surrounding the existing house. And they found nothing. But once they start taking the house down, they're going to have a monitor. And then they're going to do additional survey to make sure that there's something underneath the roof of the house as it exists before they go through. And I mean, all of this will be done as part of the building. Specific cultural surveys?
I have a question. I recently had the opportunity to spend a lot of time studying cesspools and septics. And was on the PBS program with a lot of experts that really was enlightening. And I've got to ask this question. You have the opportunity to be on a sewer system in La'ia. Is that not correct? Because I would highly recommend you be on that sewer system rather than having a septic there right next to the ocean. You've got to have five bedrooms. You've got to have a very big leach field. And we all know about the water inundation in the next 40 years, but it seems like it's going faster than it's supposed to. So I'd really be very interested in promoting that. Anybody that wants a new home along the ocean, really, if you have the option, you should be on the wastewater system in that town. We don't have that option in a lot of communities. There are over 55,000 cesspools here in this state that need to be transitioned to septics and to sewer systems in communities that have them. But we don't have them here in Ha'ula or Punalu or Ka'ava, but you definitely have them up in La'ia. So I highly recommend that you consider that. Any other questions in the community?
You got, you have to talk, you have to talk to them.
Come up here and talk. Everything has to be recorded. Thank you for your
for the video.
I just needed to know about the location of this property is. And is it near, like, other buildings of similar height, two-story? Or is it in an area where it's just one story? So location, whereabouts is it in Laie? And then is it a blim? I can see it up there, but I still need to know precisely where it is. In comparison to, say, where McDonald's is, where Foodland is? Okay, I just need to know. Because a lot of the homes there are very similar in structure. And you don't have anything that's two-story. You really don't, except, of course, Marius. They're on the other side of the road. It's not beachside.
Catherine Heath has a question. Oh, do you want to respond? Yeah, okay.
So the project location is Fito McDonald's and whatnot. All of that, Laie towns above that. Is it south?
We can't hear you.
It's south of Laie. And then in terms of two-story buildings, the other parcels that are the adjacent parcels do contain two-story dwellings?
Thank you. Was that JC?
Catherine Heath.
Catherine Heath.
My question also pertains to the restrooms. I'm five bedrooms, five restrooms. We're talking about vacation rentals and things. Honestly, this is a luxury family home, not a modest family home. Or it is going to be the site for more rentals, be they to students or to other people. Is how, what assurances can be given to us that that's not precisely what is happening? Two, I also agree with Dottie on the sewer. I'm concerned about the whole design. Looks like hardening of the shoreline, which is another concern. That's not going to help our problem at all. We didn't get to see it. It was quick, but that, those are my questions. What assurance is that that's not its fate?
The development is intended to be for a family. It's for them to be able to have their family living with them. And it, I agree, it's not a modest home because it is five bedrooms, five baths, but it's not intended to be, and it will not be used as a rental property. I will take your concerns about the sewer system back to the project owner. And we are not hardening the shoreline, but I will also keep that concern back to the project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead.
There's a second, there's a second SMA. Same.
Okay, the next SMA is location 56155 Kamamea Highway. Demolition of an existing family residence and construction of a new family residence. Are you here? Same, same folks?
Yeah. Hi, Gabrielle is actually going to present on the first screen.
Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
So this project is also SMA permit major. It is at 56155 Kamamea Highway. It is a 1.47 acre parcel that is currently, has one residential structure on it. And the breasts are primarily undeveloped. It is urban in state land classification and is also designated residential. It is within the SMA, which is why we're here tonight, and it is a flood zone X. So the property has been CPR'd and it consists of eight lots. One lot will not have any work performed on it. The remaining lots will include demolition of an existing structure and the construction of seven single-family homes. All construction will be used for personal use and not as vacation rentals. You can see below kind of a breakout of the different units of the CPR as well as what is proposed. As with the previous project sewer, it will consist of onsite septic systems. The house is being constructed beyond the 60-foot shoreline setback. The total impervious area is less than 40%, which is below the 75% land use ordinance. Drainage and storm water would be onto landscape areas surrounding the homes. So this is a project site out in Kuhuku. And you can see the existing structure that is there right now. Next figure is the, that shows you the TMK parcels, the area. The next figure is a site plan that shows you, on this plan, it's the 55-foot shoreline setback is indicated in orange. But any structures are actually, you know, well outside of that line. And you can see how the structure or the parcel has been subdivided and CPR'd. It also indicates where construction will be. So this is lot one. Next figure here. And this is the property where no work will be done. This next figure shows lot two, where there will be a proposed two-story dwelling. And this will be a single-family home. And the next figures, this one contains lot two has three bedrooms, three baths. And these show the elevations of the exteriors. The next one is lot three. And this is a one-bedroom, one-bath. The next figure is lot four. And this consists of also a one-bedroom, one-bath, same, similar construction. Lot five is a newer structure. It is five bedrooms, three baths. And again, single-family home, not a vacation rental. And these show the elevations of the exterior. The next is lot six, which will be a three-bedroom, two-bath home. On this parcel, we will be demolishing an existing structure and then constructing a new one. Next slide show elevations as well. So lot two is about 2,000 square feet. Lots three, four are shy of 400 square feet. Lot five is 3,200 square feet. This is lot six, which is just shy of 1,800 square feet. The next is lot seven. There would be a three-bedroom, three-bath, constructed on shy of 1,600 square feet. And elevations. And then last is lot eight, which is a five-bedroom, four-bath, constructed on 3,200 square feet. And the final slide shows the sea level rise mapper. And it shows the inundation at 3.2 feet. And it might be a little difficult to see in this, we zoom in. But the existing the shoreline, the parcel closest to the shoreline, which is lot one, is well, the structure on lot one is still well with that, well outside of 3.2 foot sea level rise. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
CPR?
It is already CPR'd.
Like coastal ecosystems? Is this like, like coastal dunes? Like, I can't tell from here.
Yeah, yeah, and you can come in. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Linda. I didn't know. So my home is on lot one. It was built in 84, and it is elevated, and it is up and set way back from the ocean. The one behind it is the one I'm building for my son, whose family is here. And that's on lot two. I own lot three. It's for my granddaughter. So it's going to be the three of them. I don't own the other ones, but I can speak for the three that is one, two, and six lots, and we are going to live there. I do know the other people that are moving in, so if you're concerned about vacation rentals, the lot, the lot at the bottom, I'm not sure the number of it. It's the first one. It's one of the bigger ones. It's a family. It's a husband and wife and family. They're retiring with their family. And I know they're going to live there. The one on lot three is a doctor that's moving here. And she's, wants it for like a summer home for herself, so it's not a vacation rental either. Really nice lady. So I don't, I'm sure on the other ones, they're residential as well. People, you know, are moving here. It's a beautiful location right there. So as far as dunes, we are elevated. The ones that we're talking about building on are down below the dune. I'm already on a sand dune built in 84. All right?
Will there be any drain, I mean, like, I'm just looking at proposed mitigation impacts for recalcitation? Any drainage improvements you guys are planning to control, recalcitation in coastal waters?
Well, I can speak for my lot. There is no drainage at all. It's all grass in front. So the water just waters the grass, but there isn't any drainage there. And yeah, it don't have any, any issues where it drains down to the ocean or anything.
We need a question stated and then answered.
They would like to know where the location is. And it is across the street from Gunstock Ranch. And so it's, it's on Malekana Bay, and it's across the street from Gunstock Ranch. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay.
How about sewer? Sewer, are you going to be on the Laie sewer?
There is, sewer is not available for us there. I would prefer that because I don't like having to get pumped out, you know, and call for that. It's not an option at this time.
I'd like for you to look into another option. You have all of those houses together, and you have a common sewage system yourself that would process that waste right there. They're doing that up in Kuhuku, those new homes in Kuhuku, next to the police department and all of that. Those homes are built, six homes at a time together. They have a common sewage system.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I have a builder of that, which is Anchor Builders. He built those. So it'd be easy to look into that, Rachel.
That would be a really positive thing to do.
My free, my, but I don't know, you know, I can't speak for the other people.
Right.
But I mean, there's going to be all new septics going into all of that anyway. So maybe if we get together on that, that's something we could do.
Yes, septics regardless leach out, right? And so you're leaching, you're going to be, think about the future. Leaching out into the ocean there. And so the smartest thing you could possibly do, it might be a little bit more money, but you're building all these new homes, is to go together, a sewage system, and treat the sewage right there.
So just to be clear, I have nothing to do with the other homes. I only have three.
Right.
Three lots, and one is existing.
Well, even those three, you can do.
I can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand about the rest of them.
Just, just on the burials. I used to work for the State Historic Preservation Division. I oversaw all five island burial parcels. And I would respond to during winter of Ko'ala' the waves. So I'm just concerned about sand. Be mindful of historical cultural resources. And you guys, did you guys survey adjacent lots or any historic cultural resources?
Thank you, environmental and historical.
I'm curious about how small some of these lots are and how they have space on the lots to do a leach field.
Good question, and I will have to actually think hard with the desire about that. Wouldn't DPP have already looked at that and asked that as a question?
Yes.
There's a question.
Yes.
Carl, Lynn Lenoff, we're actually neighbors, and we love Linda and her family. And we're very excited for her son and kids and everyone to move here. What we're concerned about is the smaller kind of structures. They're all, they're one-bedroom, one-bath. We have so many problems now with renters in our neighborhood. We moved here to this particular area, this rural area, because we live on a dirt road. We raised our kids. They're off to college. We love our neighborhood. And on not, I don't know. I mean, I know Linda's going to have her family here, but there are two small structures here that are basically like beautiful hotel rooms for someone to come stay in. So that's So that's our concern. I have so many rentals in my neighborhood, I don't know who's coming and going on our dirt road every weekend. So it's just hard. And we're excited for Linda and her family to live in, all together in our beautiful neighborhood. And we love our neighbors, we just. Want some type of commitment that these structures are not going to be used as glorified hotel rooms, so.
Hi, Stephen. You know, our, our biggest issue is people that know our little area, we're in the bay. Is that, you know, right now, the person next door now wants to also CPR it, eight properties. These are just trees, the trees are getting all cut down, the roads are getting ruined. There's so many people, it's not made for this, it's already done here. I'm concerned about future projects, this will lead to, you know, if y'all could stop any of the future going in, that's my biggest concern. There's people building stuff without permits, turning it into rental properties. We don't want to be the police, we're out here to be just, we want to just be good neighbors to everybody and mind our own business. But it's getting out of control. And, you know, we know Linda, we trust Linda, we don't know these other people. I don't think you could approve theirs and not the other people, we're good with what she does. But I, you know, these other people aren't even live here, they're going to have rentals, I don't want to be the police. Like you hear the people, they don't investigate, we don't want to investigate, we just want to live our lives in peace. That's why we moved to rural community, and I think that's why a lot of people that are, live here, want to be in a rural community. And we really would appreciate, expect if y'all can remember that as these projects come up, not Linda's, but, you know, other ones, or see these little one bedroom homes. It's clear it's going to be a rental, you know, it just, and it becomes a burden on us. And that's what we're trying to avoid, I appreciate you guys and your time, and I, I sense a commitment, you hear everybody complaining, seems to be the number one issue, so, you know. Chickens and, you know, having eight houses on every lot is going to destroy the bay. You know, this is done, but for the future, I just don't want to see it happen. Thank you.
Here's a problem, I bought seven years ago, with this plan in mind. Bought two lots for that. Never even thought about vacation rentals. Just have mine, my, my son is here with me to support me, he lost my husband two years ago to COVID. So my family moved here. I have a daughter that graduated, a granddaughter that graduated college, and she's going to be moving here with her family. So how, I understand Steve's concern, I do. But me buying something seven years ago with the intention for my family on an already existing CPR lot. Vacation rentals is a different department, it's a department that should be managed and should be managed by the DPP. You can't penalize people that buy in good faith a lot that they want to build them for their family. So there's separate subjects here that are going on. And also, the whole area is zoned R5. R5 means you can subdivide, R5 means that you can, can build multiple properties and CPR it. So they bought on an R5. If they choose to do that, that's their business. I didn't subdivide my area, I didn't CPR, I bought a CPR three lots. So I can't be penalized now, you know, seven years later. I understand the intent, and I understand that some people are doing things that they shouldn't be doing. But I'm not, I'm doing the process, I'm paying the dues, I'm doing everything I should be doing. Now, the other people can't be assumed that they're going, going to be doing vacation rentals. I know the doctor that's building just the one bedroom, it's a tiny lot, it's only 3,900 square feet, the lot is. So she's putting a tiny, a tiny home on it. So we can't make assumptions of what other people are going to be doing. You know, and if they're breaking the law, that needs to be dealt with. That's a different subject, but that's my point in, in this.
Thank you. So. We are in a housing crisis right now, right? And so I encourage everyone to go online to the Hawaii zoning atlas. It's open to everybody, you can go and see the restrictive and exclusionary laws that have been passed over the years and why we're at this point. So. I live in the Kuhuku subdivision, which was built in 1984. And so that is the last biggest housing development on this side of the island, and that was four years ago. And so on some, like, country, you can't even drive through. Because you have three to four generations living in one home. And so I encourage anyone that moves here, builds here, that we think of more than. Just ourselves, but seven generations going forward. Because we are running out of space, out of land, and out of homes. And that's why people are, they can't afford to live here. And so say this with empathy and grace, where we come from. We are all facing these enormous amount of challenges. DPP is struggling with finding competent workers that are able to do the job. And they have 80 openings, 80 positions right now, and that's not where you'd be. So. How do we figure these things out together? It requires a lot more conversations. We have a lot of brilliant people that live in our community. I just encourage everybody to continue to have these conversations with Oma. You know, this is a really challenging time that we live in and hard for, for all of us. And how do we figure this out together? Because. One of us to do our part in, in order for seven generations down the line to continue to live in the place that we call home.
Okay, any other questions? Maybe community members? Alright. In the bar agenda.
Yeah, well, why is that, is that, they're not, they're not, yeah, they're off here.
Okay, okay. And. We have top, our public, is that the public announcements, input from the community. I have a public announcements on behalf of Ha'ula Community Association and what's happening here in the next few days and weeks. We do have a Maui fundraiser that will be at the Ko'olau Mula Museum's hub lot, which is. Right off of Cam Highway. And that's going to be September 23rd. They're going to be, check our, we'll put it on, it's actually already on our Facebook page. September 23rd, 10 to 2. Pet mini horses, games, western roping, farmer's market, fun activities, baked foods. This is the site where we have our Ha'ula farmer's market every Saturday. And this is the fundraiser, so they're just asking to have people that come in, $5 a person. And under $2, it's free. So Monolaki, yeah. Monolaki Ranch for youth and families is the therapy program for youth using ponies and horses. And so they're the ones that are bringing all their ponies and horses. And it'll be, they participate in our Ha'ula Ho'olalea, and they're a big hit. Also, I just wanted to mention that there, we are partnering here at Ha'ula Community Center with the. Resources from the Immigrant Resource Center in town, the Pacific Gateway Center. And we have a multilingual hotline for people who are immigrants and need help. So I can share this flyer with you and, but if anyone needs help with paperwork as an immigrant, they can come here and get support. And we have a person coming in from Pacific Gateway Center every month that sets up meetings and helps people. We also, I want to just mention, if you know people who need mental assistance, as they said earlier from the city, they're still giving away at $25 million, and so people can come and get assistance with, with that as well. And we do have a CERT training coming up. CERT is the Community Emergency Res, sorry, Community Emergency Response Team. Thank you out for losing our work. A response team, it's a training, it's a three day training. But what it really helps you do is take better care of your family in emergencies, as well as we can be a part of a community effort. And so, and we also are trying to get, if you live on a street, especially in Ha'ula. We're trying to get people who will help us with the neighborhood watch program, so that we can watch after our neighbors. Especially when you know your neighbors and can speak to them and you know their needs. And if they, if there are people that might need help during an emergency, that's something that we should all be looking at and thinking about. We do have a program here tomorrow called the Capuna Breakfast. We have a Capuna Fest every month. And our, our breakfast tomorrow is about emergency preparedness for Capuna. If you all probably saw what happened in Maui, but it's happening all over the United States. The, the largest number of people that die in emergencies are over 60. And this was a AARP, it put out a wonderful toolkit for emergencies, and we're going to have a presentation tomorrow. By an AARP volunteer about some issues in the toolkit. And I think it's going to be a great, a great breakfast. That starts at around 3:30, the speaker comes on at 10, and everybody's welcome to come in. We also this year are going to have, for the first time, a. Melekenki Maka event, a festival at the resilience park. And that's going to be December 2nd, there's going to be music, marine band, bands, a number of them. Actually, we have bands coming in from town to play for us, we'll also have other musicians and hula, food, and lots of fun. So crafts, the things that you might use for Christmas gifts. And so I, that's December 2nd, that's a Saturday. So, and that's at the Ha'ula Melekenki Maka Festival for the first one. Alright, any other?
I just want to reiterate the town hall meeting at Swansea Beach Park, September 29th. You are concerned about sea level rise, climate change, please, I guess this will be continuation part two, September 29th, 30th to 7:30, Swansea Beach Park. And if you're interested in water issues, the Red Hill Community Representation Initiative Membership Selection Meeting will be this Saturday, September 16th. It's available online, hosted by the US EPA Red Hill Environmental, oh, I'm sorry, I got my degree in environmental law, maybe one or so. And for issues, so thank you, that's it.
We have one more.
Internet now.
We have one more online. Go ahead, Rainbow.
Hi, can you folks hear me? Okay. Okay, perfect. Can you hear me okay? Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect. Aloha Nui Akako, mahalo Nui for having me. Once again, my name is Rainbow Uli, I'm the executive director at Key Project. And of course, my baby just woke up because I decided to talk, so I will be fairly quick. We do have some events happening this month, the next one is going to be September 21st. We're going to be sharing stories on a speaker panel, which is very exciting. If you are interested in book curation and borrowing trends, feel free to come on down to Key Project to learn more. In addition, on September 24th, we have our, we're going to be actually doing a Hawaii Bicycling League Century Ride pit stop. So if you are involved with Hawaii Bicycling League Century Ride, then you'll be able to see us there at Key Project. We also have an Ohana Mala Work Day happening on September 27th. And a free key event on September 30th, where we get to open up our trunks and just kind of do an exchange of different things. Can you guys still hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I also wanted to let you know, similar to Hua'oe Ha'ula, mahalo once again, Hua'oe Ha'ula for all the hard work you folks are doing for Ko'olau Loa. We will be doing a fundraiser for Maui, we're going to be doing a car wash on October 7th. From 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we spent a lot of great time yesterday at Ha'ula Elementary School, working with Ha'ula Elementary School at the Kiki Market. Wanted to give you folks a shout out and let you know that our Ho'opilina Youth Program is happening October 9th through 13th as well. But that's pretty much it for us, mahalo Nui for having me, and next time I might come in person so that you can actually hear me talk. Aloha.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Unster. I'm a student of U. I work at Ho'opilina Farms, and I wanted to come and introduce myself as the farm experience manager. More importantly, I want to let you guys know that we're having a fall festival in October, it's our second annual, we're super stoked to have this annual event for the community. I'm, I'm going to leave some posters and my contact information will be booked, so you have it on hand, if you have any questions. We are excited to offer things for the community. We are looking for some local talent and vendors as well, so we'll put out a call for that. And if anybody, if anybody that wants to participate, help me to talk with them. Sorry, that event is going to be on October 21st and 22nd, weekend of, from nine o'clock to 3:00 PM. We'll have live entertainment, we have petting zoo, hayrides, pumpkin patch. So please come down, you'll see more on social media, we'll be announcing it, we'll be putting a poster everywhere, so really encourage you guys to, to join in, thanks so much.
Any other announcement?
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming out, this was a great evening, mahalo.